Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's common council meeting. Everyone has checked in except for Pete Henler in District 10. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comments. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. On recognition by the mayor, persons may address. The council from the podium, first stating their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Seeing no one will go on to item D, motion to approve the minutes of January 28th, the 2020 council meeting. Motion by Mrs. Sparrows, a second by Mr. Butke. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Staff updates, any staff updates?
I'm not aware of any tonight.
All right, mayor's comments. Recognition for Lori Panzer, Fire Department, February 14th, 30 years. And Kelly Cassidy in Parks and Rec, February 9th, wow, five days apart. February 19th, 1990, 30 years. Sure thankful for all their hard work. That's it for that. Any council comments? Seeing none, how about any reports from commissions, boards, and committees? Seeing none, we'll go on to item I. Just as before I call this one, item F, the Marshfield Utility Commission. That is a, just so you know, it is in your consent agenda. But it also is the first item. It's item K that we're going to be discussing. So with that, is there a motion to receive and place and file approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Butke, a second by Mr. Peschall. Seeing no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries nine to zero. Item K, request to approve job order number 7469, estimate for the design, construction, and demolition for the new Marshfield Utility Building at 2,000 South Central Avenue, presented by Nick Come, general manager at Marshfield, Marshfield Utilities.
Thank you, mayor. In respect of your time tonight, I'll try to keep my comments here brief. Job order 7469 is for an estimated 17.5 million. We'll continue the process for MU to build a new building on the current site. This is one of many approvals that are needed before construction begins. Utility revenues will cover all costs associated with this project. No tax dollars will be used. Rate impact to utility customers will be modest. There are many justification factors for this project that I've covered previously, but most simply put, MU has outgrown its current age facility. Current low since throughout this process to ensure the best long-term solution was brought forth for consideration. And finally, I'd like to thank the mayor and a number of the council, common council members that have expressed support and helped us through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve job order number 7469? A motion by Mr. Butke, a second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have one question. I was under the impression we would begin a job order in the packet. All I see is the minutes from the special meeting and a memo. Was I mistaken that there would not, that there would be job?
When you say the memo, I mean, there's a, yeah, the memo from Nick, a one-page memo outlining the purpose of the project and whatnot.
If I may follow up though, because I mean, I have the minutes in front of me and the minutes from the special meeting give a job order number and the overall cost, but I see no hard numbers. Because in your memo, you said captured based off some estimate. And so I'm just wondering why we're not seeing those numbers before us.
I guess I'm following past practice.
Well, this is to me a big number. So I mean, you're asking me, I have a fiduciary duty here, and you're asking me to vote for a 17.5 million dollar job order, and I have no data to show how this is going to be spent. I find that a little concerning.
Well, I think in the presentation that we provided previously, we did give you a breakdown of the major components of the thought. There was money for the contingency, money for the architectural fees, construction costs, some inflationary factors, and also the infrastructure relocation for the transmission. Those are the heart of the high-level blocks. And then within the infrastructure itself, the, on the actual building, we looked at the square footage cost for, you know, it was $200. $104 for the office space per square foot is used for the estimate, and $137 for the garage space. So those are the items that were used to generate the 17.5 estimate. At this point, we've not bid this project. This is the initial approval to really get us down the road so that we can get to the point where we can develop the documents that are needed in order to actually bid and get the hard numbers that we can then come back to this body and say, all right, here's the hard numbers, this is what we need to bond for.
If I may follow up. To come to that number, though, 17.5, had some data, I'm assuming, to come to that number. I guess I don't want to be a stickler, but I'm going to be. I'd like to see those numbers in this pack before I cast a vote. And I've had this conversation with Nick and Mr. Ebro, but I've also looking at the statutes. The Wisconsin State Statute 62.23, Section 5, says this is supposed to go to the plan commission. So I know in one of the last meetings, you said that's going to happen June, but it talks about all public buildings going before the plan commission. I'm wondering why we're waiting until June to get the plan commissioned.
Because tonight, you're meeting the statutory city ordinance that requires it of both $25,000. We're asking for that approval so we can begin the process to develop documents that are necessary to support the submittal to the plan commission, providing a detailed level of landscaping design, getting to the photometrics and other components that are required as part of the plan commission's approval. So this is just a systematic, you know, I guess, from my perspective approach that we are getting this approval so we can spend the next dollars so that we can get to the next approval, which would be not only that one, but along with state and other aspects that need to be approved.
You're on the floor for now. Mr. McSwain?
My question is also the planning commission. It would seem to me that if we vote for this, we've kind of bypassed any kind of decision that they'd be making. I'm a little confused why this is coming in this, in this manner. I guess we were, it seemed to me, indicated that we would have this put before the plan commission before we would commit to this all 17 million dollar thing.
Would you maybe want to repeat what you went over in the past meetings on the process of how this works to refresh everybody on what you've been over?
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of aspects here. You know, as I mentioned, section of the city municipal code 14.3, or 14-36, specifically Part 5, talks about any project that the commission completes needs to have approval by this body when it exceeds $25,000. That's one step in this process. The plan commission, I understand, is a state statute. That's obviously another step in this process. We're not circumventing that, nor are we leapfrogging that or jumping around that. Just ultimately, from my perspective, as we put this together and looking at how our plan was done a few years ago, this is the steps that it followed and felt it was appropriate to follow the same step. Ultimately, this approval tonight will allow us to move forward with getting architectural contracts signed, get bid documents developed, get the detailed drawings that are needed so we can then go to the state, ask for their approval, come back to the plan commission, ultimately back to this body for approval, and go out to actually submit the bids to respective contractors. Once those bids come back, we review the costs and understand where we're at. If everything looks favorable, then determine the financing requirement and come back again to this body after our commission's approved it for financing request for approval, to go out for finance. And once the financing is secured, again, come back to this body to approve the bids for the financing. All of that's done before the shovel hits the ground for construction.
Thank you, Mrs. Sparrows.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of different points I want to make. One of my points is I am also confused with the fact that it's coming here before it does go to the plan commission. You know, the project coming here before going to the plan commission, for the city to underwrite the revenue anticipated bonds, it just seems a little out of, out of order to me. Secondly, my concerns are all the large projects that are coming up. You know, in the 2020 budget, we did have to raise taxes to compensate for an accounting error. And even with that budget increase, that was only going to cover about half of the deficit. Now we're talking about bonding, you know, next year for, for the city pool. There's talks about the city garage in the works. There's been talks in the past about police headquarters and revisions need to be, need, that need to be made to the, the building that was purchased for parking. And of course, we all know that that's not a permanent solution to the issues that the police headquarters have. In addition to, you know, solution to the issues that the police headquarters have, in addition to, you know, rumblings of a satellite fire ambulance site. So for me, it's about the timing and the pure amount of money that's being requested to be spent, although I know that this is going to be covered by the ratepayers. It's still a lot of money, and it's still a lot of bonding. I agree with the gentleman who spoke before me, both of them, that this feels out of order to me. I feel that this should have gone to the plan commission first and then come to us. I realize the ordinance with the over $25,000 that exists, but it feels like coming with a job total of 17.5 million is a far cry from the $25,000 requirement. I'll yield the floor.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with a lot of the comments being made here. I want to state this, and I've said this privately, I'll say this publicly. I'm not against this project. I mean, anyone who has taken a tour of building sees inefficiencies, sees things that could probably be better utilized, better built. But when a number at 17.5 million comes before me and I have a job order number and a total cost with no, no hard data to show how we came to that number. And I saw in your memo that the commission and the staff did their due, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that a lot. But I feel the council has to do our due diligence as well because we have a fiduciary's duty to cast a vote. And I would like to amend the motion to be referred to the plan commission, have them review this, and then bring it back to the common council at a later date.
Could I make? Could I make one comment? The utility will need to spend in excess of $25,000 to develop documents that are needed for the plan commission. So in order for me to do that, I have to have this body's approval through the ordinance.
The planning commission has final authority over it. So in order, I think, if I'm understanding this correctly from the presentation you did before, you need to get started with everything, to go out and get bids, to come with that final order. And at that time, then it would go to, to planning commission for final authority. And then at that time after that, then come to council. Because if it would come in way over budget or something like that, the council at that time would be able to, to stop it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Point of order, just so I can have some clarity here. I made a motion. I'm just wondering, is there a second? Or do I have to? All right, I'll hit that.
There you go.
Because I made that, so I'd like to see if there is a second.
Is there, there's a second by Mrs. Sparrows? By Mrs. Sparrows? And are you, just one second, are you putting in what that? To refer to the plan commission for review?
Just a couple of things. One, we have to be a little careful. There is a requirement from this, submit this to the planning, like, statute basically says that.
Did you turn your, that's right.
Statute says that it has to be submitted to the planning commission. My recollection is there's nothing in it that requires them to actually approve it. It's basically to get feedback in regard to that. So I don't want you guys to think that that's some sort of authorization procedure that would have to go through a process where you're waiting for, or that it would be, you know, basically another step of approval. But that said, I think one of the things that Nick indicated here is that if you were to do what you're suggesting, we're going to probably need to also, as part of that, and I'm just thinking in terms of procedure and potentially an amendment to be considered to the motion, but that would be to authorize the expenditure necessary to complete plans sufficient to submit this to the plan commission, if that's what was going to happen. I think that's what Nick was, was referencing. So I, so just in case there was a misunderstanding, I think you want to make clear on the record that if you were to take the step that was proposed by the motion, that we include that there would be authorization for the funding necessary to submit plans and a design sufficient enough for the plan commission to basically make whatever recommendations they would make.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. Couple of things. There's some concern that there's no breakdown of the estimated costs. Am I correct, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to bring to your attention an email that we received, 114, 2020, sent to everybody on the council, including the mayor, along with several other individuals, as carbon copies. Attached was a PDF document, and in the PDF document on slide 21 of 28, it goes through the overall costs with an estimated breakdown of garage space per square foot, office space per square foot, infrastructure relocation, total cost, demolition, total cost. There's an inflation item listed, there's a contingency listed. So that, to me, seems like a breakdown of what we're looking at having this, you know, what we're looking to have done here. I realize that these are not exact numbers, and I think that part of the issue is that in order to get more exact numbers, we have to get the funding approved, more than 25,000, to then contract to get these firmed up, to then take it to the planning commission, to then get them to sign off on it, for then it to come to us, for us to then authorize the borrowing. I'm assuming you don't have 17.5 million sitting around that you're going to break ground today, or even this summer. This is just those preliminary steps. So we had great, long discussions two weeks ago at the council meeting. What are we actually going to be approving this week? The question was, if we approve this job order, are we locked in? Do we have to spend the money? Are we, you know, tied? And the discussion came back that, no, this was the first step. This was the opportunity to get the ball rolling, so to speak. After all those plans are firmed up, much like the pool project is right now, we get those, those things firmed up, we get that to the, we get those, those things firmed up, we get that to the planning commission, it comes back here. We have to figure out now, how do we pay for it? I realize it does seem a little bit scary when we look at an order that simply says 17.5 million. But this is just the first step. This is not authorizing any, any bonding or any borrowing or anything else. This is just merely the first step to get this thing rolling. Again, we were provided with a breakdown, estimated breakdown, because we don't have the final papers. I think we need to move this forward. We need to go ahead and approve this so that they can get those paperwork done, and get it to the plan commission, and it can follow through the right process. I've been at a lot of commission meetings. It's one of the, the commissions that I'm on. So I sit in those meetings and I look at month after month, all of the work that they put in, the timeline that they've laid out, making sure that every ordinance is, is met, every I is dotted, T is crossed, and then we get this through to the final. Again, we're not looking to borrow, we're simply looking to get the ball rolling, to get the paperwork going.
Thank you, Mr. Jockic.
If anyone was watching that, they noticed that I was pressing to speak and then canceling. Alderman Whittle said exactly, much more eloquently than I would have, all my concerns in, in this discussion here. We're not borrowing money tonight, but we have to move forward, it's a step by step, and this is the first step.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate both of your comments, and you're correct. I did receive that email. But again, when I am voting on something that is in my packet and I do not have numbers, I find that troubling. And so I feel, reading the statutes, and I, it's okay if people disagree with me, but when I read the statutes, it seems clear to me that public buildings go to the plan commission, and they review those, they bring back suggestions, and it comes to the common council. So again, maybe I'm being a literalist when I read the statutes, but that's what I see. And until the statute is changed, that is my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sparrows.
I'm just want to, I'm just want to reiterate, my main issue with this whole thing is the amount of projects that this has come up in the last few years in the city. Huge budget projects. So I'll kind of just go through a list of them in my head. We had, we had the, the fire depart, or the fire station, the library, the new city hall, the addition to the police, the building we bought for the police station with anticipation that is not a, a final solution to their problem. We've had, let's see, did I say the new city hall? The pool that's coming up, and now we're talking about a utility building. And probably, if I'm, I would be surprised if we don't hear something about a new city garage within the next six months or so. That's a guess. I'm not saying that by, I'm just, I'm just saying that. That is a lot of projects for this size town whose population hasn't grown. Everybody needs bigger buildings. Every single person needs a bigger building. And I quite don't understand that when the population of the city hasn't grown in years and years and years. And I'll, you'll, you'll the floor at that.
Thank you, Mr. McSwain.
You'll the floor at that.
Thank you, Mr. McSwain.
Yeah, I guess my, I guess question and concern is the, the order and process that we're doing it. So Josh, do you mostly handle this? If I could get your opinion and legal opinion that we're in the right order of doing things, I guess, because that's my concern.
Before Josh answers that, I would, I would like to remind the council that the commission came to this body on two times, and they've been over how the process works. Mr. Whittle just brought it up again. I appreciate that the, the opinions are coming up now, but it would have been helpful if we would have been discussing these concerns back when they were going over it. Because that one meeting, Nick went through this thoroughly. I mean, it was a 50-minute presentation. And now we're kind of rehashing stuff that we, which I understand, it's a big number. That I understand. And, but we've also, Nick made very, very clear what the process was and why it's going in this order. So I don't want the public to think that the council is just suddenly saying, let's go spend 17.5 million. That is not what's happening. This allows us to start the process so that they can go out and they can get the bids. And I would like to say, our utility commission has done an outstanding job in their research of this. And so, I mean, I'd like to commend you all for what you've done because it really has been incredible. Please, Josh.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, basically, what 6223 says is that it's for the plan commission's consideration and report back to the council. So they don't, like Stephen mentioned, the mayor mentioned, it's not their final, maybe half, their final action. The other part of it is it's, it's looking at the location and architectural design of the facility. We don't have that yet without those plans. So you need the plans to develop, to develop the plans to show the architectural design and the location setbacks and all that for the plan commission to weigh in. So right now, it'd be almost premature for the plan commission to look at the concept, I think. And that's kind of where we, where we were talking about the order of things, it would make sense. So I think from the statutory standpoint, it would be premature to take it to the plan commission until we have that information.
And Josh, we were talking a minute ago, when, when it's referred by this body to the plan commission, they only have a limited amount of time to make recommendations?
Correct, yeah. The plan, the plan commission has 30 days to make that review, make that review and report back to council, unless given additional time by the, by the council. So statutorily, they typically have 30 days, but it can be granted an extension, but that would have to be part of a motion. And I don't believe architectural plans and design would be done within 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. Butke.
Yeah, I agree with what Mr. Whittle has stated. I have to echo what the mayor said. I've been on the council a long time, and in my opinion, this is the best commission that we've had. I trust these people. Mr. Whittle sits on that, on that committee, and I think they have put a lot of work in, into this. We talk about all the other projects that we have. Yes, that is scary that we have all these projects coming at one time. But that should be a lesson to this council. We put so many of these projects off. We'll do it later. Later's here all at one. That's what's happening. The good thing about, about this, because I was concerned with this, how is it going to affect our bond rating, our borrowing? And we were told that it does not on our borrowing. So, so that's a good thing. And I think we should, we should go ahead and let them do their thing, and then we'll have another chance with the numbers later.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. I think I want to just touch a little bit on the laundry list of items that Mrs. Sparrows mentioned. And forgive me, because I haven't been on the council for very long, but how long did the library project take from conception to finish? 20 years? How long has the pool taken from conception to finish? 25, 20, 25 years, 30 years? How long did the fire station take from conception to inclusion? About 15? So if we're starting discussing about a fire, a police department and about a city garage, we're looking at probably a decade or more. Okay, okay. And yeah, this one, we've been working on for about 20 years. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sparrows.
Why, I don't appreciate the sarcasm, but I'm going to go ahead and add a couple of things. Mr. Butke, you said, you know, this is a lesson for this council. Things have been put off and put off and put off. That may be true, but that doesn't mean that this, the citizens should be paying for mistakes of previous councils delaying every project. To my knowledge, none of these buildings were falling over when we needed them, other than the, the pool. So, you know, while things did get put off, it doesn't mean that everything, that there's an urgency for everything to be done at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jockic.
We have, the motion on the floor is to, for an amendment to the original one. So if we could keep this discussion to the referral to the plan commission before we take any action tonight. I think, or recall the question.
Is that a call to question? Is that a? Okay, Mr. Whittle.
Hopefully, it addresses the amendment. That's what we should be limiting our discussion to.
And I appreciate that, and I think it's sort of all tied together at this point. I would recommend that we defeat this motion and we move and approve the initial motion as it was. Just one really quick follow-up. Did Mrs. Sparrows have an opportunity to tour the utility building as it is now?
Yes, actually, I did. And I was at a meeting there this week, too. Thank you.
You didn't see any, any concerns there?
The point that I am trying to make is that we are responsible. People are supposed to be voting responsibly with people's money here. And there's been a lot, a lot, a lot of spending. And nothing is an emergency, although it always seems like it is. I'm sorry, I still have the floor.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, we need to keep the discussion to talking about referring to the planning commission.
You're right, and I was answering his question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote on the amendment to refer to plan commission for review. That motion fails 6 to 3. So we'll go to the original motion, which is to approve job order number 7469. Is there any further discussion on that? Mr. Jockic?
Referring to what Josh said regarding a 30-day limit, could we be amending this to 90 days if we're not going to? if we're not going to do anything, if we're not going to be able, or if you're not going to be able to get this through the Plan Commission? Or do we not have to worry about that?
We're back to the original job order number just by itself.
I believe we're disconnected. I think we're looking right now at the job approval. The Plan Commission is.
So we're not referring, okay.
No.
All right.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion carries 6 to 3.
Thank you.
Item L, Presentation, Preliminary Draft of Five-Year Financial Management Plan, introduced by, and that motion carries 6 to 3.
Thank you.
Item L, Presentation, Preliminary Draft of Five-Year Financial Management Plan, introduced by Ron Aman, Finance Director, presented by Dave Ferris of Ellers.
Thank you. Tonight, Dave Ferris from Ellers is here to present the five-year financial plan. He and his firm spent a tremendous amount of time putting this together. They've been able to load our budget, our CIP and model. So Dave's going to walk through the five-year financial plan, which is a projection, and he'll cover how it was put together and the limitations therein. I'm here also, if you have questions, as we walk through, feel free to buzz in, provide in advance, and hopefully get a chance to take a good look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you for letting me be here. It's nice to see everybody again. The presentation is up on the board, and I think the council has it as well. It's a little bit different. The guy that has his name on there second saw that his name was second, or first before, and so he didn't want to be the first lead, so he gave me all the credit. If you want to, hold on. So the first thing is just what we're going to go through tonight. We're going to talk about the background information on the long-range plan, the structure and the goals, highlights from the city's current bond rating, some of the historical issues that you've heard about quite a bit over the last year, some observations on how that's gone since then, capital projects and debt plan, the general fund projections, the levy limit impact of those, of all the things coming together affect that, the projected tax rates, how the plan comes together with that, and then we have some summary comments at the end. So, I keep forgetting I'm the one that's supposed to advance that, so. So the way that the model is set up is we have a couple of funds that are, or a couple of things that really impact how the plan is put together. The really big thing to start with is the Capital Improvement Plan. And, you know, obviously, that plan, departments are coming up with what the list is. The council approves it once a year, but that really affects a couple of things in your model. It affects your debt service fund, because you're borrowing for some things. So the debt service fund has a tax levy to take care of that principal and interest that's coming up on those, as well as the Capital Improvement Plan has other funding sources. So it affects the capital projects fund, because you've got money coming in from borrowings or donations or tax levy, so it plugs in and actually runs how those funds end up being determined in the end. The other fund that contributes to this model is the general fund. Because the city levies the taxes all within the general fund and then transfers the money out to the other funds that have operations, the general fund really feeds this directly for all the operating things for the tax levy forecast. The next column over is the equalized value. So we did this forecast on the equalized value method, because on a year-to-year basis, your assessed value changes and the percentage of market changes. So you really can't look at apples to apples because of that. So we do the forecast on an equalized value, which is the fair market value of the city or the taxable property in the city, so that we can look at things from apples-to-apples purposes on an annual basis. All these kind of go into this forecast that gets you how much the levy would be if all of these assumptions come true, and kind of projects out how much that levy would be and what the tax rate would be based on equalized value. Then that flows into the levy limit calculation, and that levy limit, obviously, is something that the state of Wisconsin has determined that you cannot exceed. You cannot not make levy limit. It's something you have to do. So when we get down to that slide, you'll see that we've got some things that you'll have to probably consider when you go into this next budget and in the future years. Also, with the levy forecast, we run it through a projection of how the general fund is going to do as well. And that's based on some percentages that staff and Ellers have betted. It's obviously a guess that staff and Ellers have betted. It's obviously a guess at how fast things are going to grow. You never know what inflation is going to be like, but we run it through a forecast. It kind of shows us where our fund balance is going to end up. As you know, as we came out for the borrowings, fund balance was kind of an issue that is a problem child for the Moody's people. So we'll be able to show you what we think is going to happen with the general fund as well. So the goals of the financial plan for you guys, for the council, is to provide an estimate of the future tax levy requirements and associated tax rates based on a set of assumptions. So like I said, we came up with some assumptions that drove this, whether it was policies that the city already has in place or percentages of growth on certain dollar amounts, taking into account the growth of those certain types of items like insurance or wages or whatnot. The financial management plan is supposed to support your political decisions. So when you're doing your capital plan, it's a really good time. If we, you know, if we were to get through the process a little bit before you get into your budget process, we would be able to run that through the model, see if you're meeting your policies, and you'd be able to move around some of the projects so it fits into those policies, and you know that your capital plan is actually going to be a realistic kind of a projection. And then also, this plan will help you identify potential financial pressure points in advance of them happening. So as you'll see, when we get to the levy limit part, there's things that it's going to identify that you need to look forward to when you're looking at your budget for the next year and into the future. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about the rating. I brought that along with me for the sale day, and I said you could use it for light reading, but in this case, you know, it's kind of important maybe to understand what that's about. Moody's has a couple of different things that they use to basically as a scorecard for the financial health of the city. 30% is based on economy, so they look at your tax base size based on equalized value or fair market value, the full value per capita and wealth, which is the median family income. The next part that they look at is management, so institutional framework. Basically, what that is, is how the state really impacts how you are able to do business. You know, they put levy limits in place. They have, there's TIF districts that have an influence on you. There's things that the state of Wisconsin, how it influences how you do things is an institutional framework part. And really, when Moody's looks at Wisconsin municipalities, everybody is rated as an A. And you're an A1 right now, so you're basically, you will always get that grade as a Wisconsin municipality. Operating history is 10% of management. And as, you know, if you looked at the rating, that's one place that we took kind of a big ding this last year, because we had some issues with the TIF, how the TIF funded the debt service fund, how the balance sheet was categorized so that it affected what your available cash was. Those kind of things came into play, and it was one of the areas where Moody's definitely caused the rating to go down with how they evaluated you. Financial measures, 10% is fund balance. We know that the fund balance was a big thing, as, you know, we talked about when I was here for the borrowing, 5% trend. Our fund balance went from 30% down to about, I think it was like 10 or 12%, that because of that categorization problem. Because the fund balance looks like that, they also looked at your cash, your liquidity. And liquidity, I think they were looking at what money you had at the end of the year, usually the tax collection, and that was down. And so they, you know, when they see that downward trend, they usually give you, they ding you for that, too. And so they actually had, you know, that was another one of the areas where they, that caused you to have a lower bond rating. So that bond rating was issued on August 8th, based on your 2018 financial statements. You went from a double A3 down to an A1. Your strengths were that you're a regional economic center with a big healthcare presence. Your debt repayment is strong. You're retiring a lot of your debt within a 10-year period. And Wisconsin retirement system is known for being one of the strongest retirement systems in the country. So that's always a big positive. The institutional framework is always an A, as I talked about before. And then the weakness came in with liquidity, going from 27.7% of operating revenues down to 11%. And then the operating history that I talked about earlier with the changes that happened because of the TIFs and how that flowed through the fund balance. What changes, what could change to make the rating go up? You could have material increases, operating reserves and liquidity. And I think when, you've heard Ron talk about this, we have a pathway that we've done through the cash flows that shows that the TIF districts are going to actually pay off fairly quickly within the next five years. We're going to actually have material increases to operating reserves and liquidity. It's going to happen. We, you know, it's fairly obvious. Unless something really crazy happens to how your tests are doing, that, I think, is something you can rely on. The advances are going to be relieved in the same breath. Those are actually very interrelated. Reduction of debt burdens. When you look at how Moody's looks at debt burden, they count your pension as well. And so that is, they always kind of think of pensions being high in Wisconsin, but also you have a decent amount of debt, and I think there's a schedule in here that shows you, you've got like 33% of your debt payments are in the TIF districts. You know, it's possible that there's something that in the future, when you do TIF district kind of incentives or borrowings, that maybe you think about, instead of you borrowing for incentives and having that on you, that maybe the developer is the one that takes the risk at the beginning. And the way that they get their incentives is by a pay-as-you-go or a municipal revenue obligation. That keeps you from borrowing, and it makes them actually have to put the value in the ground to get that incentive payment. What could change it down is deterioration of your city tax base, so you'd have to lose a lot of fair market value. Notable increases in debt, I think, from what I've heard from staff, that they're really sensitive to this looking forward. Or further narrowing of city cash and fund balance, and I think, as I spoke to you before, I think the path for the TIF districts repaying doesn't make that a very reasonable thing to happen. I think that you'll be on the up and up on the cash and. As far as how the rating affects you, each one of these lines is the average rating. AAA is the blue one, and BAA is probably the lowest investment grade. Anything below that is kind of known as junk. So, you know, you're at an A rating. As you can tell, there's about 10 basis points between each of these ratings. So, you know, to get back up to a double A, you're going to see probably a 10-point. So obviously, if you multiply that out, it could be $100,000 of interest that you would have in savings by having a bond rating. So it's important for us to get back to that double A in the future. As far as historic issues, I think you've heard this a number of times. The things that happened when we walked in in November, December of 18, and noticed that there was a few things that didn't quite make sense as far as the financial statements. There was overfunding from the TIF districts to the debt service, which caused the debt service levy to be artificially lower than it should have been. There was large inter-fund receivables and payables with the TIF districts. And since the TIF districts didn't have any cash, it really wasn't available and shouldn't have been a current liability, our current asset. And so it was, fund balance looked like you had all this cash. But when the auditors came through in 123118, they realized that, and they reclassified the fund balance to show that you really don't have that cash. So that's what happened to the fund balance. We went from the financial statement saying we had this available current money to, no, we don't. Because we had a fund balance that looked like we were doing so well, we thought that the ability to use fund balance was a legitimate use to help reduce taxes. And because that money really wasn't there, it was actually hurting us because the financial statements were saying something that wasn't true. But we've been using fund balance. It's something that the city needs to start to get out of the practice of doing, because that fund balance that we thought was there isn't there anymore, and we need to start to get that back to health. The levy limit worksheet calculation had been incorrect for at least the last five or six years. We assisted with the Department of Revenue in helping get that back on the straight and narrow. So that levy limit worksheet is back to where you should be and looks a lot more like it should have. And then, as I talked about with the TID financing, historically, you've borrowed upfront for TIF-type projects. It's something that you should think about in the future, maybe putting the risk on the developer instead of the city taking it on right away. And then what's happened since then? Well, I know that Ron has put in a lot of hours fixing a lot of stuff. He went back to 1998 and fixed all the TIF districts where they had overfunded or underfunded the debt service fund. That has all been fixed in the 18 audit. We've done a TIF cash flow analysis with Ron and the city, just to make sure that we know where TIFs are at. We, you know, we have a slide in here that tells you where they're at, when we think they'll close. You're in a position where you know where you're going to be now, or at least you have a pretty good idea. Repayment of advances will happen relatively quickly. We've really put in some processes that will get the advances paid off in a relatively short-term period of time, within at least the next three or four years. You know, this is something that relieves cash, gives it back to the general fund so that the fund balance is actually cash instead of just a amount that isn't actually something you can spend money on. You do have some challenges, though, as you'll see when we get to the general fund on the operating budget, and we'll talk about that more when we get there. And then we're starting with this plan to model out your future debt. And what's important about that is that what we want you to do is be able to do your projects and not have any big blips in your tax rate. And so what the goal with this plan is for the debt part, and actually for any of this, is to get a flat tax rate. But when your taxpayer comes in, not only are they seeing the improvements to the roads and things like that, but they aren't coming in here with a bouncing tax rate, which makes people uptight. You know, you want to have it smooth, and if you plan it out, you can have a tax rate that can fund everything you need to do and have taxpayers realize that they aren't having that bouncing tax rate. As far as values that we're projecting, basically, we projected about a 2% increase, but there are some increases in here that are due to TIF closures. The TIF districts, number 5 and 11, with the cash flows we did, could potentially close in 2023. Now, the only reason that they wouldn't close in those years is maybe some of the growth isn't quite as fast, but the other thing might be is that you're interested in doing workforce housing. And if you did that, right now, the law is that you have the ability to extend the TIF districts a year, capture that increment for that year, and apply that to something in the city that might improve workforce housing. And there's definitions of that, and if you're interested in that, we can get that to you. But it's something that a lot of municipalities are starting to do, where they keep a district open another year, and they use that money either to improve certain things that affect that standard of housing, or just to benefit. It could even be money that helps, maybe credits to the developer to build housing that fits that definition. And then there's a couple other TIF districts down the road, 26, 27, 28. You really, you know, the cash flows show that if things go as projected right now, and those are fairly conservative cash flows, that those TIF districts could close out there in those years. Next schedule is a schedule that we use during the borrowing as well. It's called your debt base case. At December 31st, this is the amount of general obligation debt payments that you have on an annual basis going forward. There's an annual fee that you pay for certain debt services, you know, paying agents or continued disclosure. And then there's the CDA lease revenues. You get your total obligations that you have on an annual basis. And in those, those obligations are amounts that are paid for either by the TIF districts or the water, or maybe some of the utilities. But as we show on this schedule, there actually is about 30-some percent of the total obligations that's paid by the TIS. So I think that's a fairly important number. It's a fairly significant part of your principal and interest. It's a fairly significant part of your, your principal and interest. Once we take away those abatements, um, that are paid by the other funds, um, we are left with a tax levy. We take that equalized value where we talked about the fair market value of all the taxable property and we come up with a net tax rate. So, uh, at December thirty first, we're sitting at about two dollars and twenty one cents. Um, and if you didn't borrow anything else, that would fall off and the tax rate would be, um, as you see out in that right column. And we're using a two, like I said, a two percent growth rate. Obviously, if we have better than two percent growth, that tax rate actually goes down. As far as the capital plan, um, twenty twenty is a fairly, uh, big bar, as you can tell. Uh, included in this is three million dollars of borrowing for the pool as well as three million dollars of potential donation. So that, that is showing in, in the plan as far as how you're funding that. Other projects within basically the rest of the years are mostly street project driven. There isn't anything in here with some of the projects were discussed in that last, um, agenda item. The current debt policy is that you'll have no more than sixty five percent of outstanding debt, uh, of the state limit. The state limit is that you can have up to five percent of your equalized value in, uh, general obligation debt. And at this time, a- as you'll see on a, a chart a little bit later, you are within that statutory debt. Uh, the next one is that the net general obligation bonded debt per capita should not exceed one thousand five hundred. According to, uh, your finance director, this one is not in compliance at this time. But the, the finance department is in the process of rewriting the debt policies. I think this one's fairly old and hasn't been monitored. Um, debt service as a percentage of budget expenditure not exceed fifteen percent of total budget expenditures for the governmental fund types. Um, my understanding is that you're in compliance with that. So as far as the capital plan, uh, this would be the, uh, potential borrowing. There are other revenue sources that do fund the capital plan, but this is the borrowing portion of those plans. We lay them out between bonds and notes because certain, certain types of items are not allowed to be borrowed or, or financed with bonds. Bonds have certain restrictions per state statutes that you can borrow for. And anything outside of those specific items cannot be used, you cannot use bonds. So, uh, those items we have put into the notes. Um, also within our, our bonds and notes repayments, we have split things based on, uh, the, the useful lives of assets. And, and the city staff has provided us with what should be, uh, uh, financed over ten years versus twenty years. And we've set up the debt payment structure to follow. From the next page is kind of how that those borrowings come together. Uh, the left side of this is base case that I talked about a little bit earlier. You can see that those numbers, the two dollars and twenty one cents, two dollars, three cents should be same as the other page. But that pink section in the middle is actually all the long-term debt payments for the new debt that would be related to the five-year plan that you have. So, or the five years based on the, uh, the projects that the city staff provided us to do the projection. Uh, you'd have about twenty four million in principal, a total of thirty two million in financing costs to do what is as in the plan right now. Um, obviously, this is a snapshot in time. If you go to your budget this year, it's possible that you're going to say, okay, what we had in here isn't what we want to do. This isn't a static plan. It's possible that you would go and look at things and say, okay, we're only going to borrow so much per year for streets. Um, staff has talked about that a little bit, uh, so this could change, uh, with the next iteration as well. So in this case, we've taken that base plan that shows you the rate. We've added the new debt onto it and the greet, the first green section, it gives you the tax rate based on, uh, the growth at two percent. And what we've done is because we have five years of projects and we've got a fairly significant project in the pool, we're able to, to model this up to two dollars and sixty seven cents per thousand of equalized value. The reason that we leveled this off is because you have five years of projects and you see it falling off after that. We want to fall off after that because you're going to have another year come on and another year. If we had like the next, you know, if we had all the projects out to twenty forty four, we would try to keep this, this rate flat. Um, the other thing that, that, you know, I, I mentioned the staff when we met earlier is, is because the pool is a bigger project and your normal average, uh, borrowing for streets is more like three million. Maybe we model this to come down a little bit. And then we have what maybe the city council decides is, uh, maybe a, a policy on what you're willing for appetite as far as, uh, a debt rate for, for, for this kind of capital improvement. So that's something that you don't have a policy for and I, and I recommend that, that you talk about that. Is what is, what is the debt tax rate that you'd be comfortable with? But that's something that for you to, to kind of look at during the year's budget policy or budget product. Um, the other thing I want to demonstrate on this one is that if we have three percent growth, you can see what that does with that two dollars and sixty seven cents. It actually starts bringing that tax rate down in a pretty nice flow. So the, the one thing, you know, we're doing this conservatively, but the more growth you have, the, the, the faster the debt gets paid off and the better the tax rate, uh, or it gives you more flexibility in what you do. The next schedule is your debt limit schedule. Um, as I told you, the, the policy here at, at the city is sixty five percent of your statutory, uh, borrowing amount. And the blue line would be the statutory amount, which is five percent of the equalized value. And the red line is the city's policy. And as you can see, uh, the green line, which is your outstanding debt with all of those five years of projects in it, does not exceed that policy. So you're within that policy for the five-year plan. And then the general fund is the next section. Uh, these are some of the, uh, poll or the, uh, assumptions that we use to project out the general fund. Uh, staff looked at these with us. And so when, when we took the general ledger or the general funds, uh, detailed trial balance, we applied these percentages to each of these, each of these types. We, we coded the chart to be whatever that particular item was and then applied these. And then that flowed on to, um, how it affected this next schedule, which is the general fund. And as you can see in the first, uh, in two thousand nineteen, you know, we, we had some, we recognized it at the budget time or when we got in here in late eighteen, that there was an application of fund balance that, that we really didn't have the money. Uh, but we were using about a million to a fund balance. And that did some fairly significant damage to, uh, the unassigned fund balance, which is basically a sign of your liquidity. So way on the bottom, you can see the unassigned fund balance percentage. You know, because of some of the past things, we were down to twelve percent because of additional use of fund balance, we're at nine percent. Staff, uh, it, it's trying to take chunks off of that so that we aren't using as much fund balance. So we used, you know, another seven hundred and six thousand for the twenty twenty budget, which, uh, because of some of the repayments of the advances from the TIPS, that was counterbalanced. So we're starting to actually decline back up on the fund balance percentage because of those, uh, advances being repaid, uh, from the TIF districts. So if you look at the next schedule, this gives a little bit better idea of what those repayments of advances are doing. We're going from having, um, a big chunk of red, which means you don't have the cash to having a lot of green, which means those TIF districts are paying off and the cash is coming back for the general fund to be able to use for its operations or, or emergency purpose. So that's a pretty good indication that we're on our, we're on a really good track on the general fund as far as getting back to health for fund balance purposes. And that fund balance item is really related liquidity, which I talked about in the raid. Then on the tax incremental districts, which you talked about a little bit, I just laid out a schedule that kind of shows you, uh, when it was created, the number of the district, when it was created, what type of district it was. You know, whether the district was extended and the reason a couple of these were extended is because they were severely distressed. Uh, one of them was extended, I think two of them were extended to help provide donations to those severely distressed TIF districts. So i- i- I think if you see, you got two that say yes in the district, the distress column, the two that say no are the funding sources, uh, are providing donations to help those two that are distressed, uh, come back and be able to pay off. So I, I have provided a column that says the year that the advances will be paid off, uh, when the mandatory closes. Uh, basically the, the last date that that district would be open for the statutes. And then what I put included a, a column that says when we think it's going to actually pay off. And as you can see, most of these are paying off before they're statutory. And then I just have some notes on whether it's a donor and who it's donating to. So this is maybe something really good for you to, to have handy as far as what, what the TIF districts are about, when they may close and what's providing donations. Then as far as levy limits, um, as I talked about, this, the state obviously has a, a plan in place that, that holds you to a, for a certain amount of growth in your tax rate. It's based on net new construction. You sometimes get a bump when the TIF districts close. Uh, you will see that when your TIP districts close, they don't give you all of that value though. They give you like half of that. So when you get done with closing a district, the year after it closes, you'll see a bump in your, your levy limit. You'll see a bump in your, uh, uh, you're, you'll be able to do some taxing increases. Um, but in the meantime, uh, they've restricted you to only that net new construction. So this graph here demonstrates that we have an operating levy limit line that's blue. Uh, the red part is where the debt service is allowed to be outside of that levy limit. So anything that is general obligation payments for debt, the city is allowed to be above that blue line. And that, you know, that is, uh, whatever that amount is, you're able to levy for. And then the green line, based on the projections that we did, is how much, if things keep going forward, based on the percentages we have, that's how much we're going to exceed that line. And so when you're doing your twenty twenty one budget, there's probably going to be some, uh, relatively tough choices to make. Um, you can't not make levy limits. So you need to be at that red line. There shouldn't be anything green. So things that you can think about is, are there alternative revenues out there that you could maybe take advantage of? Whether it's a streetlight utility, uh, wheel tax, uh, things like that. And I know those are additional taxes, but when you get to the point where you can't afford to, to, um, fund your services, you got to make some tough choices and, and whether you have an alternative revenues or you find a way to cut expenditures, there's tough choices to make and, and you're going to have to try to figure out how you're going to make it. I, I think staff will give out, um, uh, recommendations to department heads on what to come in at to start with. But then, once they get those numbers, they'll have to figure out how they're going to. So I think, I think you've got a budget period that's coming up that, that may need to have some tough choices. And then, uh, the next graph is really kind of a culmination of all the things that we talked about with the tax levy. Uh, the, the light or the blue is the general fund, basically. The, the rates in the, the first three groups are at equalized. We did provide an assessed tax rate to staff. Things that staff thought that you had seen some of the, the cess rates more than you see the equalized. But we provided that in the far right of the purple as a total rate. That might be a meaningful rate to you. But the general fund is the blue, the debt is the red and then the new debt that's projected into, in this green. Uh, if you were to take the, the general fund part out of this, the debt service part of this is actually remaining flat. What we need to get to is a point where our blue is staying flat as well. So that's one of the challenges you have, uh, facing you. So what might change the projections that we did for the general fund and, and that service, you know, increased growth and value obviously allows you to, uh, it, it'll, it'll help your, your ability to have the taxes to fund your services. Uh, it also improves your tax rate, uh, on some of those things that you have. If you cap the general fund expenditures or implement al- alternative revenue sources, um, that's the kind of things you'd have to, to think about for meeting levy limit requirements. And then you could look at, you know, uh, as far as helping the tax rate is whether you limit how much annual borrowing amounts are. So in, in summary, um, I think, you know, what, since we walked in here in December of eighteen, we've seen some really positive, uh, you know, we went through some doom and gloom times, but I think, you know, what was nice is that when we saw that, we found a way that there was a light at the end of the tunnel on some of those issues. And I think, you know, you're on a really good path as far as recovering your health in the general fund. You know, any increased growth in the city would obviously have a positive impact on the levy limit and tax rate. Uh, reducing general fund expenditures or implementing alternative revenues may be necessary to reduce the tax levy and comply with levy limits laws. Uh, and then I think the structuring of annual debt and monitoring of potential refundable debt, which we do constantly, um, will help stabilize the debt service tax. So that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Question, uh, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. This is, uh, great information. I just have a couple of quick questions, just partly for clarification, I guess, on my part. Slide fifteen, we talked about the current debt policy. I'm assuming that that is our city imposed, not state imposed.
So the state is the five percent of the equalized value. And, and what you actually have imposed is that you only use sixty five percent of that.
Right. You have three bullet points listed there and all, all three of those are our own self.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And that's where you were talking, um, about potentially looking at bullet point number two.
Well, correct. Yeah. As part of the, you know, we're looking at revising this debt policy. Um, we haven't been in compliance with number two for, I think, five or six years because it implied that the population of Marshall is growing faster than a CPI index, which, which isn't going to happen. Uh, we've got some other changes planned too, as far as reporting back out. But no, that, that's correct. We're not in compliance with that one.
Okay. Next question on slide twenty, um, you talked about the percentage of unassigned, uh, unbalance. Those percentages down at the bottom there. That's the percentage of money that we have that affects the Moody's.
Yes.
Rating.
Yes.
What is the recommended percentage?
Uh, typically, uh, the, the Wisconsin or the general governmental finance officers association, I just spit that one out. Um, they recommend about two to three months of bills. Typically, we see people about twenty to twenty five percent, maybe twenty to thirty percent is a normal.
And we do have a city pol- is there a policy, Steve, that, or a guideline that we want twenty five to thirty percent unassigned?
Yeah, twenty five to thirty percent has been our historic, um, target for that level. We got a ways to get to that.
Yep, then.
All right, um, you mentioned that when we close our, our TIDS, um, we'd see a bump, but we only see half the value bumped.
Yeah. So when, when a TIP district closes, what the, what the intention is, is that there will be some tax relief for residents. And so instead of allowing the municipality just to take all the value that comes on, it lets you have half the value. So there's, there's an implied, uh, relief. Because when you, when you add all that value on, but only allow the municipality to tax for half of it, the tax rate comes down.
So then.
You'll automatically see a tax rate decrease because of those TIPS clothes.
So then we don't see another bump later to equal it out. That's just what it did.
That's what it.
Okay. And then one final question. Um, we saw the Moody's, um, adjustment to our, our rating. Fairly quick down. Is it a slow up or can we look at a?
It can be a pretty slow up. The city of West Bend actually got, uh, downgraded about five or six years ago. This year they switched to S and P and got, went back up. They, they actually got tired of, um, hearing that they weren't good enough to go up and decided to have somebody else look. So the Moody's will be slow.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just have a couple of questions for you. You said in one of your slides that our levy limits, that you went back, I believe, five to eight years because they were wrong.
Yes.
They were done wrong.
Yeah, about two thousand thirteen, I think we went back to. Twelve.
Now, do you all do, do you all review those then to make sure that I, first of all, Ron has done a fabulous job since he's been here. And he's done a, a great job of fixing a lot of this, but where is that the second look at that to make sure? I'm sure they've been done right, but.
Emailed it to me.
And then, so you guys go through that, correct?
Correct.
So, so help me with this then. On the five to eight years prior, when those were sent to you and they were wrong, or maybe not you, when they were sent to whoever and they were wrong, how, how did that, how did that not work?
There, there's no requirement for it to send anywhere. I mean, I wouldn't have to send them anywhere. I file them just like many other filings. Um, but since of all, since the changes, we needed revision, I did send it to Dave and have him look at it.
So we don't know if prior that they were sent anywhere. So we don't know if prior that they were sent anywhere to see if these were correct or not. Don't, don't you think that if, if you're evaluating this, now I know you weren't doing it then, but if you were doing it then, that you'd want to see that just to make sure that those calculations are correct?
Well, and I think, and I can only speculate on this, but back about that time, the DOR changed how they used to do the levy limit. You used to be able to, if you didn't use all of your levy limit, the number still came back up to the top for the next year. And at that time, what they did is they changed that to be what you used. So if you didn't use all your allowable levy, you were taking a hit. And so what ended up happening is it just kept eroding away at, and, and the way that the debt, the debt adjustment that is on the levy limit, it, it just caused your, your operating part of your levy limit to, to go down, I think, three million. I think we recovered three million when it hit.
So in regards to then those, those levy limit worksheets of before, we just had a process before there, there was no double check. There was no accuracy check.
I don't know.
So that.
If I can jump in, neither of these two individuals was, was here or involved.
No, I know that.
But, no, I was going to take it from there. I mean, the previous finance director may well have reviewed these with our previous financial advisor back in the day. I, I don't know that often. I know he prepared them each year.
In, in, okay. So then having, having said that, if you would see inaccuracies, would you bring that to the attention of the council in these presentations?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the other thing was.
Well, and I think, I think the one thing with the, the financial management plan is it actually runs through the calculation. And so when Ron was doing his, I had his information. I was able to go, yep, that's what I have too. So I, we were basically in sync.
And the, the final question then is, do you review our recommended budget? Because when we first got wind of this huge problem that we had, as I went back and I reviewed the budgets, it, it said that the, it was buried so deep, no, nobody really could have seen it. And I don't think that's accurate. And the reason is, is because what was said in the budgets is going into the TIDS is the principal and the interest only. So when the council and the mayor at the time were reviewing this, they're thinking that, okay, this is principal and interest, when in fact, that was not the case. It was principal, interest plus extra. Who is supposed to catch that? Because when we are telling the public in our budget that this is principal and interest, and that's not, that becomes a real big problem. Somebody should have got, and for me, I will tell you, that's not something that can get, that would get buried down so low. That's right at the, that's bubbles. That's right at the, the top of the bathtub. And so I never bought that, that we're down so deep. How could that not have been caught?
You know, and, and the thing is, is that, and, and I, I was an auditor and I know what Baker Tilly or Virchow Kraus used to do with tying out debt payment. We had a big schedule and we tied them out. I, I can't speak for what other places do, but in the financial statements, I would have known that those numbers were, were such. And as far as what Ron does now, I mean, we've tied those transfers in the budget to debt schedules. And they're specifically, I, I think you could tie them right out to what we both have right now. So, or, you know, with, with us helping you with the financial management plan, we can definitely, you know, I, I think I did look at them now that I think about it. But that, that's a great double check is that it, you, you've got somebody else looking at the financials now that we look forward. You know, your auditors always look that way. And even if they're here in June, it's not information for you anymore. And that's why I think this plan is great because it lets you look that way. And you can see what, what's going to happen with, with what you presented us to, to, to put in front of you tonight. If we're in front of you before you could go on through your budget process, some of this capital that maybe doesn't fit, or maybe if you look at a tax rate policy, maybe you're going to make adjustments during, before you finalize budget. So we always kind of like to have this be in front of you before the budget goes, you know, to approval. We just haven't had a chance to get that far because of the things that we're getting fixed and whatnot, but all the hard work Ron's done to get things harder.
Thank you. Anything further from the council?
If you wouldn't mind, just a, a few notes here, you know, while David's speaking, and a couple reminders. One is that we are still waiting the results of our TID audits for four, seven and nine. And they go back quite a way. So I can't imagine there'd be major adjustments, but there still might be some adjustments. Like Dave said, when we get to the CIP, you know, everything's based in this forecast on, on what is now. You know, we have the ability to change it. And then what it most likely really means for us is when we get to 21, 2021 budget, in 2020, I felt like we did everything we could, you know, from the finance point of view. We started some admin allocations. We moved some stuff to capital project funds. We refunded debt. So those things were all used up. What it really comes down to is, is now it's a general fund expense issue. And there's not really any way around it. So most, two most likely things as a starter that are going to happen is in 2021 budget, we will likely have to set a cap of expense increases like, and it's not going to be a lot, you know, to kind of start whittling down what that is. You know, so, you know, when our budget goes out, you know, please return not to exceed, you know, a certain dollar amount or percentage. And then obviously on the, the debt side, you know, we can't borrow ourselves back into prosperity either. We reduce the, try to reduce the amount of borrowing. And then after the pool project, it probably is some time before we look at another major borrowing of that, that account. So I think Dave and his firm for all the work they put into this.
All right. Thank you very much. Oh, please.
Yeah, just two points. One, to tell on what Ron just said, you know, we had a meeting with Dave earlier this afternoon, some of us. And, and staff is fully committed to the fact that it's going to be not a silver bullet. There's going to be a need to be able to add revenues where we can, look at some possibilities, do some expense reduction, obviously in a serious way. And, and it's all part of a package deal. We're committed to the fact that we need to reduce the, the use of fund balance applied in order to balance the budget and meet the levy limits and expenditure restraint for that matter. So know that we'll be working with you and, and that the guidelines are fully in front of us. The other thing is just from a process standpoint, we brought this to you tonight as a draft. And I'd like to, if there's no concerns, I'd like to put it on the agenda for next meeting for approval. And you say, well, what am I approving? Am I saying that every one of these numbers has to be met just the way it is on the, the 26-page document? What you're doing is you're saying this is our framework going forward. We have been waiting for this day for a long time, for having a five-year plan that ties together debt, CIP, budget, you know, all these things into one package and gives us a roadmap going forward. So just like when you take a roadmap out to go somewhere, you, you might slightly veer here or there on, on your travels. But we are going to use these for everything we do after that. CIP, budget, all the decisions we make, everything we do from a financial standpoint when we come to you. This is going to be what we refer to in terms of trying to keep us on track to get where Dave and his firm have pointed us toward. So if there's no concerns, I would put it on for formal embracing, if you will, on Tuesday, the 25th.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item M, second reading of ordinance number 1425, amending section 6 dash 27 of the Marshfield Municipal Code pertaining to maintenance and testing of fire protection equipment presented by Pete Floodie, deputy fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. Just as a reminder, this proposal was to amend Municipal Code to require third-party inspection companies of fire protection systems within the city to provide a copy of that report to the fire department. This is being done just to streamline the inspection process for both us and our customers. I'm looking for a motion to approve that. Ordinance 1425.
Thank you. There is a, a motion by Mr. Whitson and a second by Mr. Budke to approve ordinance number 1425. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you.
And item N, second reading of ordinance number 1426, rezoning two parcels located near intersection of McMillan Street and Frye Avenue. Parcels 250-2602-363-9988 and 250-2602-363-9986 from RH 35 Rural Holdings to SR2 Single Family Residential presented by Bryce Hembrook, city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So the applicant is requesting to rezone two properties from RH 35, which is essentially our agricultural zoning district, to SR2 Single Family Residential. The plan is to build single-family residences on each property. The properties are located in the northwest section of town, near the intersection of McMillan and Frye. The request is in line with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and will meet all zoning requirements. One thing to note is there is currently no connection to water sewer utilities. However, once there's development, you know, closer to that area, they would have to connect to city utilities when possible. The Plan Commission reviewed this request at the January Plan Commission meeting and have recommended to approve the request. And so with that, this is the second reading and the recommended action is to approve ordinance number 1426. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to approve ordinance number 1426, motion by Mr. Whitson, second by Mr. Peschel. Discussion, Mr. Whitson.
Thank you. So no city utilities are going to be on their own for wells and whatever else until, we're not developing it out there. They're just doing their own until.
Yeah, they'll have to have their own utilities. So if they have a, you know, a holding tank, they'd have to have that until there's development. We anticipate that development will probably be quite a while. In our comp plan, we were suggesting that it probably wouldn't be another 20 to 25 years until we see development that would require, you know, where our utilities would be out there. So as of right now, they would have to take care of, they'd have to have their own private utilities.
Okay. One other thing, in the memo that's in the packet, it says that there are three attachments, the ordinance, the location map and the future land use map. I only see the ordinance.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Just in the future, I'd really like that map.
Yep. Okay. Sorry about that.
Thanks.
Seeing no further discussion, please vote. A motion carries nine to zero. Thank you, Bryce. Item O, appointment of Pete Lotzer of 1209 East 25th Street to the Communications Committee. He's got a, an email in there, in your packet to be appointed to that committee. There's no urgency there. There is no recommended action at this time. Final action will be scheduled for the February 25th meeting. Mr. Budke?
You mentioned is the Communication Committee, would that be after the next council meeting then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Seeing nothing further, item P, adjourned to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Chapter 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, personal property tax claim filed against the city, possible litigation related to contracted services and closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Statute Chapter 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, possible acquisition of land located in downtown area, consideration of possible sale of city-owned property. Your motion to go into closed session, motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Peschel, seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries nine to zero. Let's take a, a five-minute break.